Welcome. We have one item on the agenda tonight. It is the strategic plan update, item 2.1. And Strategic Planning Committee will give the board an overview of the plan. And that I'll turn it over to Dr. Alston.
Thank you and good evening. Thank you all for coming and certainly thank our presenters tonight. I thought before we let the presenters go, I would start with historical context. And I'll read excerpts from my June 6, 2016 superintendent's update to the board at that time. At that time, we had a focused district designation based on the 2013, 2014, and 2014-2015 test data. Our lower socioeconomic students were in the bottom 10 percent statewide. We were required to curate a district comprehensive improvement plan and file it with the state. To date at that time, we worked with a consultant who met with teachers, administrators, parents, and community members and did a self-reflection largely based on evidence. We are finding that we have areas of growth in different domains. One area that we already began working on is student progress monitoring. With regard to RTI and AIS, teams have been assembled and have been working with the director of PBS to clarify and codify the steps, processes, and procedures to identify and assist students in need. At the end of this process, the plan will be presented to the entire staff for additional feedback and sent to the BOE for review and ultimately adoption. With regard to special education, we had two consultants from CREP spend time at HCS to do a program review of our special education department to look at our various programs, identification of student services, classroom instruction, to name a few. They also made groups of parents, teachers, and administrators that will be issuing recommendations going forward. With regard to budget, declining enrollment, the tax cap, and what we offer will play a significant role in the development of an educationally sound and fiscally responsible budget. Tapping into the financial expertise that we have in this community and publicly sharing the basis and rationale for fiscal decisions would, in my opinion, be helpful. Technology at HCS, with Hyday Computers Services Technician, also known as Technology Coordinator, both elementary and secondary principals have helped tech subcommittees and have recommendations for the personal model. We've also had systems review done by both these this year that will further guide the work. District-wide curriculum committee. An effort to clarify what we teach, when we teach it, and the skills and standards are addressed in how we assess the efficacy of such. A K-12 curriculum committee or separate building committees is likely the best way to handle them. Massing scheduling committee. The mass schedule has been brought up as a point of conversation since I began my tenure. The auditor from the controllers' office gave an overview regarding the efficiencies of the secondary schedule. It may be one decision to put together a scheduling committee and examine it. Then I went into challenging questions for challenging times. How do you decide what, if anything, gets done from a list of so many important things? What gets priority and what gets put on hold? Here's what we know for sure. Doing nothing has a price. Doing any or everything has a price. Doing things differently equals change. Two things we know about change, not necessarily here, but in a lot of places. People do not like change. Change is the cost that we pay for progress. So back to the question, how do you decide what, if anything, gets done from a list of so many important things? What gets priority and what gets put on hold? So I talked to a couple of experienced, award-winning, respected superintendents in New York State and masterminded with them. And that's where the idea of coming in with a strategic plan and getting multiple stakeholders around the table came in to do a comprehensive study of HCS with recommendations to go forward. So with that, I turned the microphone over to a trusted colleague, Mr. Dan Rains, who served as the internal facilitator for the Strategic Planning Committee and had done a tremendous job. And I would just ask him forward to give it more out because he put in so many hours.
Thank you. I can use this one, Craig.
Yep. Is that good?
Excellent.
I'm going to move around a lot and make it hard on the camera. Get my light up here. So I'm going to walk you through a little bit of how we arrived here today for this strategic planning. It needed to be publicized in the beginning once after Dr. Alston made connection with PLC and we connected with them and I came on. It needed to be publicized, it would be publicized with posters, on the website, via email, robo-call, all kinds of different things, different methods of getting things along. Data had to be gathered and these were kind of happening simultaneously while we were publicizing and asking volunteers in the core team. But data needed to be gathered. We gathered data from students, from community members, families, and faculty and staff. A lot of individuals actually participated in that. There were about 106 community members that took the family engagement survey, 134 secondary students, and 115 elementary students, 64 teachers, and a few staff, eight to ten. We also gathered information in focus groups, different focus groups. There were students, I think there were 20 secondary students and 10 to 15 elementary students. There were 120 faculty and staff that joined focus groups. And there were 15 to 20 community members that also participated and gave a feedback and gave ideas. So it was great. So after that, having all that data, we recorded together. And they began by looking at where we were and where the ideal was, where we wanted to go. They looked at the data and also came up with ideas for a vision and drafted a mission. Examining all of that, all of the data that came in, they looked at the areas of strength marked in green, the areas of relative weakness or possible weakness marked in yellow, and the definite areas where we wanted to address marked in red. Though this is only a sample. Making up a strategic intent, drafted these strategic intents that which are essentially long-term goals that would be handed off to the task forces to make plans for. And then they were handed off to the task forces. Task forces took those strategic intents and drafted action plans with steps to get to where we wanted to be with those strategic intents. The core team and the task forces worked together, although separately. Entry to technical, is that the word? Yeah, they... Strategic intents were developed initially by the core team. The mission and vision were drafted by that core team. And then action plans were created by those task forces. And that is where we came up with the strategic plan that we have to present to you tonight. So I'll bring the suit down and start talking about how we got to the vision that we got to do tonight.
So I have to explain, we probably got some of these statements. As Dan said, all that happened, and that kind of way our pathways are everything that we're about. In our first session...
Sue.
We've got to put it right up here. They won't get it on the phone. So our first session was a year ago when you arrived. We started talking about about mission statements. They brought us questions like, who are we? What do we do? Who are we serving? And why do we do it? Those are all what we need to take the deep answers. With every part of the plan, we always put it in groups. Our core team, we've got a group, everybody's data, and we combine all that data and then go down. Can we start over?
Here it is. Good. That's a perfect answer.
All right. So as with every part of the strategic plan, we always broke into groups. Our core team, we have about 25 people there. Group to five, we would go through the questions, we would take all the input, and every number was kind of pulled the way that worked out. And in the end, we would go and discuss every group's answers. We would have all this information all we saw on the end. For the mission statement, we took the old mission statement, we took a look at it. And it wasn't where we wanted to go, it wasn't what the data was saying, it wasn't what the strategic plan briefing was saying. So we decided as we wanted it to be very concise, very memorable, and words that we could all leave in and everybody could support. So we developed a subcommittee, there was four of us, did that a few times, came up with about five mission statements that we presented to the board. Actually, four, we just got to be able to back end everything for the focus. And it was funny because we just represented it and these little pictures and all this included. It would be a little tagline on that, we'd be like, you know, it was interesting. So once we got that back to the core team, got it down to two, everybody said what they didn't like about that, we got it down to two. And we decided, like, every time you look at it, there was a word that wasn't wrong, couldn't agree, so we decided to table it until we were done with the strategic plan. When we brought it back up, that little tagline we held in discussion, and eventually that little tagline became our mission statement. We ended on to educate every student every day, and something that people wanted to stand behind, and they wore, they used that t-shirt, and robes, and, right, letterhead, so it was kind of important. And then some of the data that were at the end, I think that you brought up about the top, those were the top 50 companies?
Non-profits.
Non-profits, and all of their mission statements were like two words to 10 words, and they were really, really short, and they were really, really successful, so we kind of followed that one as well. Yeah. Thank you.
In discussing the vision in our core teams, we needed to figure this out by saying, what do we want our ideal state to be? We wanted to have a compelling future with a description.
I turned it off because it was too quiet. I'll make that change. Can I get it?
We needed to figure out this vision and what our, the compelling future, the description of the desired state that we wanted. Again, it was a work in progress. We met, we did several drafts, we presented, and we finalized it. And this vision is what you see up here that we have come to agree upon and focuses on success for all.
Hi, I'm Malicia Simmons. So in thinking about beliefs, your beliefs are these important essential ideas about what is true, what is false, what is right, what is wrong. In thinking about your set of beliefs, they are touchstone, you can return to it again and again. Are our actions, are our policies aligned with our deeply held convictions? They are also an excellent way to bring new members into the organization. Here's what we're about. Is this what you're also about? Are you going to be a victim here? And as you think about the sum of beliefs, ultimately, it's a story about our character, who we are. And as I think about these beliefs, when I read them and think about them, I start to insert "we," you know, I start to insert the words "our school." I think about things like, we are fundamentally concerned with student learning and welfare. We think of students as every single one, diverse in value. We see them as multifaceted, and we care for their physical and social and emotional and academic health, and on and on and on, right? This is the story of who we are, our character. And again, we all worked so hard on this in groups and iterations, drawn from our data, drawn from our knowledge. This is who we are.
Okay, I'm going to present about parameters. Parameters are really important for a strategic plan because it's what we're going to return to during the implementation process. And we will find lumps in the road. You have seen the action plans in the packet you have of the... There we go. And a lot of the action plans are very detailed, have a lot of steps, and it's going to be a lot of work to get that material into reality. So the parameters are those statements that we go back to that can ground us. They help us to stay on path with our strategic plan during the implementation process. When things may get bumpy or even when things are going well, we'll be using these statements to help us with our decisions as we move forward. That's where the big parts makes plan. We are not done with it because we made documents, we haven't done anything yet. So the implementation part, when we get that implementation team together, that's going to be really important in order to move this forward.
Amy, can you just ask me a question about this slide? Is this the...
If there's something happened to this slide, it's worth it. Something did happen, that's why it's changed again.
I can also appreciate that.
There's more control in the part of my reading side. I think that's just better.
Are you good?
We're good. I was thinking, don't you mind going to slide out of your foot?
I'll use this mic for ease. Think it sounds better.
One thing I wanted to mention, can I walk?
Yeah.
That's all right. Leave it there. It's a little heavy. One thing I wanted to mention before, this was a combined work of 40 to 50 people, I think it was around 44 or 45 people combined total, that participated on the core team and then the task forces, because there was some overlap as well. They put a lot of time into it. And based on the survey results and comments in the surveys and the focus groups, the core team narrowed that, they narrowed the four major areas, they narrowed, sorry, they narrowed all of the work into four major areas: academic, technology, family and community engagement, and faculty and staff support. And each of those four areas, which, as I mentioned, were drafted earlier in strategic intents, in each of those four areas, the task forces took those strategic intents and turned them into action plans, which you'll see in the plan. Though not all of the action plans are listed here, nor are all of the strategic intents. Did you have any questions about any of the areas of the strategic intents or anything that we can answer tonight? Because that's essentially the process, where it started, where it went through, or how we got here and what you have before you.
Just one simple question. Under the different parts, whether it's a charge or a strategic intent, is there any ranking in the order that they're presented or are they just there?
Under the charge and the strategic intent, I mean, not necessarily. Some of the action plans are orders according to just logical steps. Some, and some really have more logical orders than others, based on what the goal was. Sometimes it's easier to have step A, B, C, D, and others it is a little bit more scattered just based on the nature of the goal.
I understood the material we received. The next step would be all of these, you've got to give community and our topics, the next step?
Yeah, Dr. Alston is good. I think he's good.
Yeah, so we've been discussing, there's two options, and both options. One, the board could say, we think this is really important, we should focus on this and this, and we would do that, right? But traditionally, what happens is there is an implementation team that gets put together. You can't spell it, it's some of the same people we see tonight or who have been a part of it. And then they start to prioritize and start laying it out. So it's really your call, because you've been discussing a lot in terms of goals this year, but traditionally, it's an implementation team. And feel free to jump in at any point if you want to.
I don't know if this is possible, but there's a lot of words here. There's a lot to read, and there's a lot going on. Is there any way for the people that are here who are visiting, for maybe for each of these, just to give us a human feel of a summary or a, I don't know, I don't know if that's a reasonable question to ask or a reasonable answer to ask for, but...
So, Matt, are you ready for a focus on what was this kind of like that you were doing?
I just kind of want a feeling of how, I don't know, I think I would like a summary of how it went, how it felt, how it went, what?
I think I'm going to be low enough to think I get what you're saying.
Please tell me.
So I think it might be helpful to, if we, and I would like someone to talk here, but I'll do one, and Ellen, you tell me if this works.
Okay.
And if it does, not, I believe I never said it. So let's, I'm going to go to dynamic academic culture, right? And for events of the board and the committee, that will be page nine. There were, there's two, there are a couple of parts to it. There is the charge, and then there is the critical issues. I think it would help people if I just laid out a couple of the charges and a couple of the critical issues, because that is really kind of the work that leads to the steps. So, the dynamic academic culture test, political research, best practices will provide the students with an innovative and excellent educational opportunity to engage and ensure the mission of Hamilton Central School. The task force will develop strategies and action plans that will. And I'm just going to read the first three bullets. Implement an RTI system that ensures the success of all students. Find opportunities to connect regional employers and students well. Probably, okay, that's a training, entrepreneurial. Experiential. Learning, you know, the older I get, the smaller the print is. Experiential learning and possible internship. Last one, implement instruction that is differentiated to meet the diversity needs and interests. So that's the charge. So I now want to jump down to critical issues that have come up in this department, in this area also. And so one of the critical issues, ensure sufficient implementation and understanding of a comprehensive tiered response to intervention. In effect, make sure you have a really good RTI system in place that's functional at all. At the time of this creation, you had not approved the RTI plan. We had one now. Develop, but develop in effect a system of communicating achievement and needs of students with families. So that's a critical issue in this area that needs some attention. Create more opportunities for enrichment. So in the area of dynamic academic culture, that's a nice overview of what we're trying to, what the charge of the committee was, and in effect, some of the critical issues. The action steps are kind of self-explanatory. Does that help, Helen? I hope.
Yeah, it does. I guess, is there, do you, yeah, do you have that card, you're going to shop? Yeah. I guess, I'm much more interested in hearing people's responses and how people responded. And I love all the informations on the page, but I kind of want to hear about, yeah.
I'm going to take a shout out of it and tell me if I can get that there. Right, I'm on page 22 of the report. Here, we're talking about family and community engagement. And so, don't look at the charge, right? Start down the third block, our data, research, and best practices. So we would show up at meetings and Tammy and Dan would just, all the trees, so many trees were destroyed in this process, they would just give us stacks of paper. People who were there, you know, not with me, right? They would get these stacks of paper full of the survey results. And Dan showed us a screenshot of one of the survey results with all the questions and the greens and the yellows and the reds. And so you'll see here that we worked with the student voice survey, the school performance scan, the family engagement survey. And so what we would do is we would sit in a room and we would look through all those data and try and say, okay, what are these big issues? What's red, what's yellow, are we doing well? And sometimes we would argue about it. We would see something that was yellow, or we would see something that was red, and we would know it was true, or we would try to figure out, what is this really a signal of? Does this, can we triangulate this across data sources? So many trees, so much data. So then, what would happen is we would get these big sheets of paper and these markers, and we would start to write down, okay, they summed all of this, what are these key issues? Then we're in critical issues block number two, right? And so there, based on all those data, you know, parents are saying that we don't hear from teachers, you know, we can't really track our students' progress easily. And so here, you know, we're talking about regular systems, right? We need to do a survey, you know, people want. And then, once we figure that out, and again, this is an iterative process, right? So there would be five pieces of paper, and you know, we'd go through and synthesize across all. And then we found out with strategic intents, right? Said, all right, this is where we want to be, how do we benchmark it, right? So we can do something that's achievable, where we, you know, have a real target. And then we gave it to those task forces, and we gave them this charge and said, hey, go figure it out. And then they came and figured it out. So when I go through this report, there are so many things. For me, I think the most important things are, what are the critical issues, what are the strategic intents? And then as we think about implementation forces, they've got to really start to get down into those maybe griddies of, okay, which action plans are we going to follow? And, you know, what do we prioritize as the questions that are in this whole process? Is that what you wanted?
That one.
It does. You know, also, you're perfect for letting a person do that. You think about these videos, and everyone participated in, that really gave you the affect that you have, what people are thinking and feeling. Because it does feel like this is a lot of stuff, and how, do people think this is doable? Is this what Hamilton needs? Does everybody really follow that? So I think that's kind of what she's asking you all, is how do you feel about this plan now that you have put it together?
Yeah. There was a lot of talk about, this is really a lot of stuff, and that came up. And, you know, and I would say talk about the process of, this really allowed people to really dig in, really dig in deep and talk about things that you don't normally talk about, for fear, or for no time, or things like that. So those are the kind of things I think that you'd more like to hear, you talk about, how you're feeling about this plan. It's beautiful.
I have a question, and I appreciate that context, because I think that that is really helpful for us to understand and to be able to appreciate the time that obviously you all spend in the effort this process. It's remarkable. So how do the four areas weave within each other? So let me give you an example. So I'm looking at the academic, the dynamic academic culture, and I've identified in first action plan, 1.3, 1.6, 2.1, and... Just those three. We'll start with it. So those are identified action plans that require technology to implement. So how, and maybe this is an implementation question, but was thought given to the prioritization of whatever technology platform would be needed to implement an electronic forum for sharing our best practices teacher to teacher? Or developing a centralized dashboard, which I think is wonderful, I love dashboards? To, you know, track student achievement across different grades or classrooms. The third one is, you know, how you, as far as the IEP and 504 plan, how you're doing an electronic end-of-quarter evaluation. Are those, were those, were those looked at from the...
Yeah, so we've been discussing, there's two options and multiple options. One, the board could say, "We think this is really important. We should focus on this and this." And we would do that, right? But traditionally, what happens is there is an implementation team that gets put together. You can't spell it with some of the same people we see tonight or who have been part of it. And then they start to prioritize and start laying it out. So it's really your call because you've been discussing along in terms of goals this year. But traditionally, it's an implementation team. And feel free to jump in at any point.
I don't know if this is possible, but there's a lot of words here. There's a lot to read and there's a lot going on. Is there any way for the people that are here who are visiting, for maybe for each of these just to give us a human feel of a summary? Or I don't know, I don't know if that's a reasonable question to ask or a reasonable answer to ask for.
So, Dan, are you ready for a focus on what was this kind of like?
I just kind of want a feeling of how, I don't know. I think I'll like a summary of how it went, how it felt, how it went, what?
I think I'm not old enough to think I get what you're saying.
Please tell me.
So I think it might be helpful to if we, and I would like someone to vote here, but I'll do one and Ellen, you tell me if this works. And if it does, not, I believe I never said it. So let's, I'm gonna go to dynamic academic culture, right? And for events of the board and committee, that will be page nine. There were, there's two, there are a couple of parts to it. There is the charge and then there is the critical issues. I think it would help people if I just laid out a couple of the charges and a couple of the critical issues because that is really kind of the work that leads to the steps. So, "The dynamic academic culture test, political research, best practices will provide students with an innovative and excellent educational opportunity to engage and ensure the mission of Hamilton Central School. Task force will develop strategies and action plans that will." And I'm just gonna read the first three bullets. Implement an RTI system that ensures the success of all students. Find opportunities to connect regional employers and students' walls. Probably, okay, that's training, entrepreneurial. Experiential, learning, the older I get, the smaller the print is. Experiential learning and possible internship. Last one, implement instruction that is differentiated to meet the diversity needs and interests. So that's the charge. So I now wanna jump down to critical issues that have come up in his department, in his area also. And so one of the critical issues, ensure sufficient implementation and understanding of a comprehensive tiered response to intervention. In effect, make sure you have a really good RTI system in place that's functional at all. At the time of this creation, you had not approved the RTI plan. We had one now. Develop, develop in effect a system of communicating achievement and needs of students with families. So that's a critical issue in this area that needs some attention. Create more opportunities for enrichment. So in the area of dynamic academic culture, that's a nice overview of what we're trying to, what the charge of the committee was and in effect, some of the critical issues. The action steps are kind of self-explanatory. Does that help, Ellen? I hope.
Yeah, it does. I guess, is there, do you, yeah, do you have that card in the shop?
Yeah. I guess, I'm much more interested in hearing people's responses and how people responded. And I love all the informations on the page, but I kind of wanna hear about.
I'm gonna take a shot at it and tell me if I can get there. Right, I'm on page 22 of the report. Here, we're talking about family and community engagement. And so, don't look at the charge, right? Start down the third block, our data, research and best practices. So we would show up at meetings and Tammy and Dan would just, all the trees, so many trees were destroyed in this process. They would, they would just give us stacks of paper. People who were there and are not with me, right? They would get these stacks of paper full of the survey results. And Dan showed us a screenshot of one of the survey results with all the questions and the greens and the yellows and the reds. And so you'll see here that we worked with the student voice survey, school performance scan, the family engagement survey. And so what we would do is we would sit in a room and we would look through all those data and try and say, okay, what are these big issues? What's red, what's yellow, are we doing well? And sometimes we would argue about it. We would see something that was yellow or we would see something that was red and we would know it was true or we would try to figure out, what is this really a signal of? Does this, can we triangulate this across data sources? So many trees, so much data. So then, what would happen is we would get these big sheets of paper and these markers and we would start to write down, okay, based on all of this, what are these key issues? Then we're in critical issues block number two, right? And so there, based on all those data, you know, parents are saying that we don't hear from teachers, you know, we can't really track their students' progress easily. And so here, you know, we're talking about regular systems, right? We need to do a survey, you know, people want. And then, once we figure that out, again, this is an iterative process, right? So there would be five pieces of paper and, you know, go through and synthesize across all. And then we found out with strategic intents, right? Said, all right, this is where we wanna be, how do we benchmark it, right? So we can do something that's achievable, where we, you know, have a real target. And then we gave it to those task forces and we gave them this charge and said, hey, go figure it out. And then they came and figured it out. So when I go through this report, there are so many things. For me, I think the most important things are, what are the critical issues? What are the strategic intents? And then as we think about implementation forces, they've gotta really start to get down into those maybe griddies of, okay, which action plans are we going to follow? And, you know, what do we prioritize as the questions that are in this whole process? Is that what you wanted?
That one. It does, it's, you know, also, Ellen, you're perfect for letting a person do that. You think about these videos and everyone participated in apple afterwards. That really gave you the affective view of what people are thinking and feeling. Because it does feel like this is a lot of stuff and how, what, do people think this is doable? Is this, is this what Hamilton needs? Does everybody really follow that? So I think that's kind of what she's asking you all is, how do you feel about this plan now that you have?
Put it together.
You know, there was a lot of talk about, this is really a lot of stuff and that came up. And, you know, and I would say talk about the process of, this really allowed people to really dig in, really dig in deep and talk about things that you don't normally talk about for fear or for no time or things like that. So those are the kind of things I think that you'd more like to hear you talk about, how you're feeling about this plan. Is it doable?
Tired question. And I appreciate that context because I think that that is really helpful for us to understand and to be able to appreciate the time that obviously you all spend in the effort. This is remarkable. So how do the four areas weave within each other? So let me give you an example. So I'm looking at the academic, dynamic academic culture and I've identified in first action plan, 1.3, 1.6, 2.1. Just those three. We'll start with. So those are identified, um, action plans that require technology to implement. So how, and maybe this is an implementation question, but was thought given to the prioritization of whatever technology platform would be needed to implement, um, a electronic forum sharing our best practices teacher to teacher? Or developing a centralized dashboard, which I think is wonderful. I love dashboards. To, you know, track student achievement across, um, different, uh, grades or classrooms. The third one is, you know, how you, as far as the IEP and 504 plan, um, how you're doing an electronic end of quarter evaluation. Are those, were those, were those looked at from the technology perspective to see if that would work? Do you understand, do you understand what I'm saying? Like, I just wanted to see where they weave within each other.
Yeah, so I'll start with that first question, kind of how they weave together. And to go back to what Alicia was saying, that there was a lot of back and forth. What's important, what's not important, what's most important, what's less important. Initially, there were, if I remember correctly, there were, I don't, I don't even think that we initially added technology group because at first we were going to have technology kind of weaved into all of them, assuming that it was going to be a part of all of them anyway. And then we decided, okay, it's gonna have to be, there's gonna have to just be a group focused on technology and how it's, the acquisition, the implementation, the management of it because it's just such a big thing. Another aspect that was weaved in all of them was kind of communication and protocols. But, but the task forces that worked, the task force that worked on technology was not necessarily working with or alongside the task force that worked on faculty, staff support or dynamic academic culture. So some, some of that prioritization, uh, what will, what's most important to do first, which platform we get first, some of that prioritization would have to be done by an implementation team.
So we have a lot of task forces and not that we can have.
All right, go ahead.
So there was a lot of task forces when we first came out of it, eight or nine. I mean, the priorities that people came up with. And then we worked together to condense it down to four because Tammy told us to. And it was a little more manageable. You know, like, we would have, we would have been here, we could have never done it in years. This really would be hard, you know? So like, dynamic academic culture was actually two task forces combined into one. So we had to shift stuff around. And that's why some of them probably feel a little grandiose and lofty is because we just mushed some of them together to be able to get it all done.
And if I may add, that implementation piece is so important. So on each task force, they, of course, you remember it was there. So they had all the background of what was happening. So when you're talking about implementing something that has an impact on technology or a budget or whatnot, that's why it's important. For the implementation team who's looking at all pieces. The implementation team doesn't do the work. They oversee the work and they prioritize and they make sure that if this is going to impact this, that there's communication of that. And then that, that team's in contact with your superintendent and superintendent with the board. So it's a very important piece to make sure that all of this does flow and it doesn't become isolated, isolated again. Because that was the important reason we did the strategic plan so that all of the things that you were doing would come together.
And I was gonna say, um, Stephanie, there are some pieces, thank you. There are some pieces that we knew as a district, we needed to kind of put in place anyway. So at the elementary school, either it's done or it's almost done. An elementary dashboard for all of the students would get added in the books. Is it done yet? Three months, yeah. Right, and that's gonna be a board presentation in the near future. At the secondary level, I think you're a little bit behind, behind the elementary, but they have, they're working on a dashboard also.
No, it's off and around.
Oh, all right, see, very good. That's why, thank you so much. So there's gonna be a board presentation also. So there are things that we were working on that people recognize, which, yeah, I won't move my hands, um, that people recognize are good things for our system that are in there that now when the implementation team comes together, it will start to move around and, and emerge. Thank you.
I have another question. Under critical issues on page nine, um, there's word used as adequate example. And so I guess, my question is, how are you defining those? What do those mean? And how, how did you, therefore, look at these statements? Page nine. So the second to last bullet, critical issues, one to last bullet, those establish adequate protocol and systematic procedures. So what does adequate mean? And where is the, um, where's the ability to measure that? So when, when do we know we need to have? Um, and my other thing is, I see throughout the document, but even in this section, we're pre-K though. So pre-K is on page nine, it's not on page 10. Pre-K is on one page, it's gone on another. Um, and pre-K is part of our school. So we need to make sure that it's written throughout or at least explain why it's not. Because I was confused that where we lost pre-K. That's my two.
And there's a third question. The, uh, the critical issues really are, so the critical issue isn't saying the goal is, well, it is saying, in essence, the goal is to get adequate, what was the wording? Sorry?
And then establish adequate protocol and systematic procedures.
So I know they're critical, they're critical issues and they're issues that you're looking at, but then how do you, from that, from that pieces to answer adequate? I guess it's more about wording because now I'm looking to figure out how do we measure that?
Yeah, well, in the critical issues section, it's important to remember that those are, those are the issues that we identified as problem areas, not problem areas, but.
Areas.
Areas of lack, like, yeah, lacking. So we worded them in such a way to say, these are the things that we identified as everything we need to look at. So essentially saying that we need to develop or implement adequate protocols is identifying the idea that we may not have, or somewhere along the line, someone identified that maybe the protocols are not adequate enough. And how that's identified, whether that's, who says it's dynamic? Let me take a shot at it. Is this another implementation process answer that what's, what's going to define adequate? What's gonna define the goal is going to be when the implementation team gets together.
Well, I, I think the, the critical issues kind of roll with strategic intent. It's all of the strategic intents. And so within those strategic intents, we then develop action plans. Those are action plans for many steps that the implementation team will have to look at and make, and make decisions about those steps. And probably define how we are going to assess our achievement of those strategic intents.
And if I may add, if you look at charge, critical issues, um, and strategic intents, those all came from the core team and those led the work of the task forces. Now, implementation will focus on strategies and action plans. The measurement will come out of the strategic intent. So the critical issues will no longer be measured. That's what the task forces heard from the core team were issues or challenges or room for growth. Um, so now what to focus on is, that's why it was so important to make sure that these strategic intents were measurable. That was a very, um, very, I'm not sure of the word, maybe Dr. A could tell me. It was a process where we had to really push people to say, but it needs to be measured. But it needs to be measured. And then I would like to take full responsibility on the pre-K. That was an oversight. Pre-K should be throughout and make sure that gets it. So I'll take full responsibility for that and take it to thirteen. Sorry about that.
Well, I had that that might not have been. The pre-K issue was probably because there were so many individuals working on different aspects of it. So one section may have been done by two or three members of the task force or another section might have been done by a few other members of the task force and then it came back and we were, there was a lot of editing going on. Right?
I don't see blame, I just, I didn't.
No, because we will make sure that it gets in the fourth part. And in fact, someone brought that up and still oversight, so apologies. We will make sure we get that in there for sure. But just to make sure that the measurement calls for strategic intents only and that those other things are for when people read the plan. Where do we come from and now where, where are you?
Anything else?
Great questions, by the way. You really kind of brought out what was really, you know, when you're presenting, people get a little, like, what were you? So you really brought out the essence of plan and your questions.
I'm not gonna ask, but I thought I would just say, because it might come up. What was the total investment?
Wait, I, I didn't, I'm sorry. I didn't realize that we were done, so I have more questions. I thought we were going section by section.
Oh.
So I, I need another minute for sure.
While, while Michelle's collecting her thoughts, should we be direct? Um, I mean, minor, minor, for, let me give you one example. And I don't wanna hold up everybody towards the sake of, um, for minor points when I think that there's some incredible work. But some of the sections explicitly, let's say, we're going, in 2019, we're gonna collect baseline data so that in 2023, we can say that we have made this measurable product. And some of them, for example, who are on right now, um, dynamic academic culture, it says by 2023, 80% of all respondents will agree above or below. And there's 80% across the board. But we have, somewhere I can tell, we don't know whether, I mean, what if in 2018, 90% of people will leave that. So, um, I just, I think it makes sense that there consistently be that, um, that baseline data collection so that you could never determine that.
I was gonna say, that's, that's a good question. Most of them are based on the data that we already collected. So we already know that it's below 80. Some of them identify specifically, we're going to create a survey that is more Hamilton oriented because we don't feel like that one or two questions in the general survey address what we really need to find out. But those, those sections are identified specifically. Unless identified specifically, they are probably right from the data we looked at and already below 80, probably well below 80. And therefore, identify that as a relatively realistic.
So why do we, why is it 80? Why, why don't we strike for 100 on everyone? I was heading there. I didn't know what.
Yes, it depended how far it was. Because if you're at 20, 100, of course you want 100. But it has to be five years and it has to be reasonable. So if you are at 20, the team talked and said, we need this to be reasonable. So if you go from 20, you wanna go to 80. And 80% is in the green, so you really want everything to be in the green. So you want it to be 80 or above. It really depended on where the survey started. I'm sorry to keep interrupting you guys, you did all.
So, so Dan, I'll get to my, my overall question. Should we be direct, specific, minor questions that I don't think make sense for right now?
You can send, I don't mind getting a lot of the questions from Dr. Austin. I mean, if it's a minor, if it's a minor editing question or, you know, wording question, I was a part of a lot of the editing, I don't mind getting those. Is that safe to say?
Look, I was trying to take work on things, like, you put it in so much.
Send all of them to Dr. Austin.
Yeah, and I would, we need to keep this, to keep this flowing smoothly. I think you should address them all to your superintendent and he will then address them to me, who then finally can step in to.
I think Harry hit on what I was looking for with the question. It's, I'm fatigued. Thank you for the feeling.
But I was still pressing, like, Michelle, because I wanted to hear the input. So I actually, so on page 19, there's something that says, "Use current practices from frontline education." I'm sure Max wanted to use an implication. What is frontline education? In capital letters, like, something.
Frontline education is what used to be my learning plan, which is a, which is a platform that we use to, for, um, professional development and.
Thank you. And I, I have one more and I don't know if it's appropriate or not. I'm gonna throw on a wish list. I throw it on a wish list for faculty and staff to create a culture where unfamiliar teachers aren't afraid to participate. I wanna throw that out as a wish. And you do it at what you will, but I don't know if it's appropriate for me to do that. But.
I wonder if that would come up in that mentoring? Because there was a whole task force on staff and supporting staff. I think that may come up. However, while it's not a usual thing for the board or anyone to change this plan unless you don't adopt it, it would be a good place for you to give the implementation team feedback and say, hey, let's kind of do this because this is a living document and it moves and grows.
I have one question just been cleared. Somebody else in the mic. I don't know, maybe it's just my voice. Um, in a couple spots, it talks about explore further the claim that behaviors interfering and burning. And I just didn't want to assume that I understood that, man. So a group could kind of put some flesh to that and explain that a little better.
Someone else did that one because that was a very interesting one. Well, thank you, Deidre.
This one was interesting. A lot of the data that we got back from students' perspective that they took, asked them questions such as, is your learning, um, in, uh, do other students interfere with your learning because of their behavior? And that was a huge red flag, like, across the board. Elementary, middle, high school, teacher surveys, student, you know, family data. That was like a big red flag, no matter who took it. So we kept coming back to that, saying, other students are affecting other students' learning because of their behavior. How are we gonna target, how are we gonna tackle that? So that was like red flag in every single survey that we, that we looked at.
And I think the further, Manon? Yeah, the further what you're talking about is while the survey said that, some of the data on the focus forums didn't cooperate in that. So while they really figured, thought that this was a red flag because it's very important if your education's being interrupted, they felt like it wasn't triangulated. So therefore, they didn't wanna put it aside thinking, oh, is that an outlier? They wanna really dig in, see, is this really happening? So.
A really good question.
Yeah, because they went round and round with the core team as well. So, so again, I don't, I don't know what the next plan is for what's happening here, but, but my question is, with the dynamic intent, I mean, so how, how does this play out? Where do we go? If we choose path A, what happens? If we choose path B, what happens? If.
Right. So I'm just gonna pick something. Say the board at the next meeting adopts the strategic intents and parameters. And say, Dr. Austin, we think, um, we would like you to focus on, I don't know, pick something here.
Dynamic academic culture.
Right, and enrichment, additional opportunities for enrichment. We want you to focus on that for this year. Then I would, it would be a deviation from how it usually works, but I would just ask people from the core team, they was in a team and say, get some teachers together and say, okay, how do we wanna do this? And we would put together something and then come back to you, right? Based on the outcome. But traditionally, what would happen is you would adopt it and I would come back, I'd come back to you and say, okay, we, we reach out to people and say, we need an implementation team to prioritize what we wanna do. Um, this is something we have resources for and we need something else, something that might, you know, cost $5,000. Um, and or it could cost nothing if we put this together. Um, if we prioritize, these are the things that we think the implementation team needs to tackle first. So something that would cost very little, but would add value, um, could be that teacher mentoring piece, right? That's comprehensive. So it really would depend on what the implementation team came up with. Or what the board said, we really wanna try and, if not get it done this year, move the, move the goal closer to achievement this year. So it's really kind of your call. Uh, if you wanted a recommendation, I would say go with the implementation team because that would be a structure, unless you wanted a quick hit. And then, you know, to get all the names and say, all right, we, we are accomplishing it. It's really your call. Okay, I'll finish my, again, my, because I was worried.
And I'm obviously trying to speak for everybody else, but it just seems to be that you've got a group of people who've spent so much time working on this that without even going another step further at work, you guys probably come in with a sense.
That's exactly the frame of, frame of mind that will make this plan really go forward. Also, um, I was also an internal facilitator, non-implementation team at a school district where I was a good curriculum person. One thing that we did was, we put together a new dashboard for this plan, because you have things that weren't in place when you started the plan, but now are in place now. So what we did was, we rated it red, yellow, green, not even looked at, it's in place but not quite up, and then agreed, hey, this is fully going, so you want something like that. And then what happened is, every month, we would update the board, in fact, we had a board number on our implementation team. So this kind of helps you keep track and say, well, we've already got this going, we don't have to spin our wheels trying to figure that out. So, it's something you might want to consider.
Because I'm the one on this team that's most date-oriented, I can't do it under that, I, very much so. Um, I guess that is the hardest part, I'm having, it's, now there's another step, and I still don't have date tied to things. And, and this is a long process, don't get me wrong, I, I understand that, but I also need to have some, some set point, so I'm assuming that that comes from the implementation team, however, I don't know, I don't know when that would start, when those things would come in. And so, those are things that, the next step, I need to know those things, and, uh, so that, so that, that's, I guess, I'm still feeling, you know, Washington State, and maybe that's where we're supposed to be, and that's why I'm looking.
And that's exactly right. Your, your, I bet a date is five years, so what are you gonna do to make sure this happens in five years, and that's where your implementation team can take?
Uh, that's, I got, I think, I think my question was sort of along the line of Paul, if I'm understanding you correctly, if we choose to go with the implementation team, is, is there a choice of the board giving the implementation team role, or the board saying, hey, team, you guys are in this, you guys are living this, you know what the priorities are, you pick the priorities and run?
Yeah, I, I would recommend the latter. Certainly, the board always has the choice to do whatever it wants. But, we know that when this works well, it's usually following the same process. You're the implementation team, um, and having a board member on the implementation team is great, having it on the board agenda every month is great, uh, for updates, yeah, but I think that would be the better one, because at the end of the day, superintendents change, boards change, uh, the people who are really gonna be here are the people who are generally people who live in the community, and people who are here, um, sometimes people who are career, but that's part of the beauty of a strategic plan that is community-based and rolled across parent, teacher, discipline, that way.
And so then, how does that implementation team get built? How does it get put together? How does it get?
The same way we put together the core team, the same way we put together the task force. We cast it out again, and, um, yeah.
Okay, so I think what I'm hearing is, because I, I think that that's exactly the way you got the consent, and you need to put this on the agenda to adopt formally the mission, vision, strategic intents, and.
Foravement.
Foravement release. And then we, lack of a better word, assign an internal facilitator to figure out the implementation process and team.
That would be me.
Okay.
My role, my role is to then put together the implementation team.
So, right, so, so, and then we, then we begin to build, you begin to build that team, and it just works out this exact same way?
Yeah.
That makes, I mean, that makes sense.
And that team will also have a facilitator, and in our school, we helped hire a consultant for the first year to come and help implementate that, implement that plan, and we were only, we only had them for six months, because after six months, we were able to roll with it on our own. But you do need someone to facilitate that team, and I would recommend somebody coming in and kind of getting things rolling.
So that becomes an agenda for our team. And I think, um, I, I don't know how, I don't know if this is the right question, but I was gonna just ask her. Is this something that we, we put on our website, and we let the community make comments on? Do we, because not everybody was in this process, not everybody saw it, and all of a sudden, here it is, this is the direction. Um, I, and I understand it, it needs a process, and slows the process, but part of one of, you know, one of the major, um, opportunities for our district is transparency and shared decision-making, so that falls in with share vision and role. I'm not asking for.
Yeah, I'm interested in that, because she's done so many.
Yeah, so I'm just, I'm just interested in, you know, is there a timeframe that you put out on your website, and you say, um, you know, maybe this person wasn't a part of the core team, wasn't a part of the task force, and that, but maybe they'd like to be part of the implementation team, and that would be.
I think, I think that's a great idea.
Do you, right, so do you then?
And it's an excellent question, and it's interesting, because I'm working with another district right now, who has done that all along, they brought everything out, and it made me a little anxious, because it really did slow the process, but now what I have found is, is the product is getting richer and richer, so I think it is a good idea. Definitely want to have some boundaries and guidelines to that, because you can't have everybody's opinion, yeah, but getting some feedback. And I think what you're going to find, this is what we found in another district, is everybody's not broadly early agreement, because really can't have representation. But I would say it's a good idea, if you're okay with the process being slowed down a little bit, I mean, it's important, it's not about the time, it's about putting this in place with fidelity, and making sure that you have the best of the best.
Yeah, and I believe it, it provided that informed consensus, that you're looking forward, applying in, yeah, community, and the vibe, and transparency, and all of those things that, that we talk about, so.
I'd like to just, thank you all, um, and all the people that are not here, um, for all the time that you put in, the effort you put in, the hours, um, as, you know, it takes a lot of time, um, and we can tell that you guys really put a lot into it, so thank you very much.
And I was like, Dan, you had a fantastic team of people working, really thinking outside the box, and really committing themselves, and it was a really good job, I was really happy to work with.
If I may, I just wanted, someone's going to ask about the core, and I wanted to represent it, right? I just wanted to just get that out. Right. We initially contracted for improved, um, the cost of this strategic plan for $17,975. At some point, the committee asked for five additional days, um, to which we used two of the five that it needed. Um, the team got better without, um, needing that level of support. So, the total is $19,300, the total investment in our children's future is $19,325 gross. Um, the net would be, um, you know, after you pay that through the CO3, the net would be $9,662.50, to which, one of the things that I'll say this year, because I think it's important, in a school district our size, where we have been identified as not necessarily meaning that we're doing the best job and identifying, um, making achievement for our socio-economic struggling students, it is very difficult to put together a program just for them. So, in, in essence, a rising tide lifts all boats. So when we say that, um, we looked at our data for students with 504, 50% of them are economically disadvantaged. When you put together, uh, an academic plan that raises everybody, you're automatically dealing with the extra socioeconomic charge, challenging students. So I wanted to kind of make that really clear, that although we did create a program after school next year, um, for economically challenged kids, for East Park after school, but then even then, um, some weren't able to come, and then we had parents, we had students who needed additional assistance, who we let in, and then there was still, so we let the parents in. So, in a school this size, you take the approach that's going to give you the best value, because if you just did something for, well, sixth graders, it would probably be not a good use of it. So, that's the, uh, investment in our children. I am so certainly pleased to work with not only people here, but the 44 or 50 people who came in and, um, just worked this process, and again, Mr. Rains has been so many hours, um, and, you know, kudos to you, and thank you so much. This is a part of, and I would say, one of the larger investments that we've made in the SPS program here, and you and this team are, are certainly thanked and appreciated for what they, anyone who will say.
Thank you. Okay, any other comments or questions that we have on here, or is there any other things we need to say? All right, so thank you all for your time and your effort, and, um, a really, really well-done document, living, living document, so, well-done, thank you to Tammy for the facilitation. My partner, first question. All right, so with that, I need a motion to adjourn to a second session to discuss matters regarding the.